It's getting tired. Maybe it needs new battery. There it is. Good evening, I'd like to welcome everybody to the November 17th, 2016 special meeting in Guyman City Council. To the rise at this time, Councilman King, would you read the invitation?
Shall we bow? Dear God, we just come before you, we just thank you for this day, and we thank you for all the many blessings that you bestow upon us each and every day, and, dear God, we just beseech you for some moisture for our land, and, again, we just thank you for the many things you give us that we someday can take for granted. We thank you for the upcoming holiday of Thanksgiving, and let us always rejoice, and the freedoms we enjoy here in this land, and the participants we have in the social activities, and we thank you for the workers we have here in the city. Be with us tonight as we go through this, this meeting, that we make the correct decisions that betters the city. We thank you for Mr. Mitchell being with us and helping us guide at this time, and we pray that you'll be with him as he goes up and down the highway and give him safe journeys, dear God. For each one of our employees as they travel, we just pray that you'll give a safe hand with them also. Again, we just thank you for life itself, and thank you for the way we can serve you. Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call this meeting to order. Agenda item number two is attendance roll call.
Peterson.
Here.
Swager.
Here.
King.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Here.
Cron.
Here.
Hawkins.
Here.
Mr. Petty.
Here.
Mr. Mitchell.
Here.
Agenda item number three is approval of the consent agenda.
Make motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second motion.
Have a motion and a second.
Cron.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Swager.
Here.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Peterson.
Here. Hi, my, hi. I'm here too. Get something started. Agenda item number four is presentation of the monthly activities and financial report by Main Street Guyman. Ms. Graham, how are you?
I'm here to represent, um, I'm Julianne Graham, I'm here to represent Melan Johnson for Main Street Guyman, I serve on the board, so thank you for having us here. The 2016 Career Focus Class recently concluded. We do appreciate the participation of Soylent Medina, who's in this, who works for the city of Guyman. She was awarded a scholarship for, to participate through Main Street Guyman, and that was funded by TCEC. I'd like to thank the interim city manager for speaking to the class, and the city council for allowing us to use the chambers for the final class. Chief Dean McFadden, we appreciate his participation on this year's planning committee, and his input was invaluable. You will see in the report that the On the Bricks TV program was a veteran interview by Charles White. He interviewed J.C. Lewis at the Heritage Community in October. The Main Street Group cash mobbed Beauty and the Beast, it's a new store downtown, and they had six mobsters, that's more sales tax dollars, to support our city and our community. We lunch mobbed Pizza Hut and The Galleon with 16 mobsters, again, supporting the community. Main Street Guyman applied to be a neighborhood champion for the American Express small, Shop Small campaign, so that's where these bags come in. I'd like to present each of you with one of these. What, what that means is that at Main Street Guyman on Shop Small Saturday, November 26th, at 9:00 a.m., there will be an event at, at the office, and it's going to be open to the public for anyone who wants to, to come get a free shopping bag, and breakfast burritos will be served, and it's just to encourage the public to come out and visit downtown and shop small. And that concludes our report.
Any questions? Question? Questions? You bet.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The events of 26th.
That Saturday night.
Still have to fill it out.
Thank you very much. Agenda item number five is discussion and possible action on resolution number 16-5, dash 15, a resolution setting utility rates, solid waste disposal charges, fees, and deposits, and establishing procedures for utility connections, disconnections, and reconnections. Resolution is attached. Mr. Mitchell, you want to talk?
Sure. Over the last month, six weeks, we've been providing the city council with a lot of information regarding our current utility rates, noting that both water and sewer rates haven't been raised in five, six years, and we believe it's necessary to proceed with adjusting those rates to at least cover the cost of our operations for both our water treatment plant, sewer treatment plant, maintenance of our collection systems, and the operation of our sanitation service. And so we presented to you three options to look at, options A, B, and C, and we're recommending option C. And the material you have in your packet, including the resolution, incorporates the rates that are shown to you in the exhibit under option C for a person who is a basic water and sewer user, who uses less than 4,000 gallons a month, their rate, water rate would go from the current rate of 1428 to 1893. For someone that uses between 4,000 and 20,000 gallons of water per month, their base rate would increase by that amount, plus their gallon rate would increase from 168 to 176. And then for a commercial business that's using between 4,000 and 50,000 gallons per month, their rate would rise from 140 to 153. And for an industrial customer, that rate would go from 146 to 156. So we're recommending those rates under option C, and we believe that the rates should be implemented at the start of the new fiscal year, January 1st, 2017, and we project our estimated revenues, once those rates are in place, to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $850,000, which will cover our operating costs for those utility systems, and provide us with a little extra money to cover emergencies and unexpected repairs during the course of the year. So with that, I entertain any questions you might have from either myself or from David. David did most of the calculating and building the spreadsheet for us, so all the technical questions should be referred to David.
The only thing I ask is that the city put something in the paper explaining that the budget for this year actually showed, when we budgeted for, like the sewer and the water, how much was actually under budgeted, like 400,000 or 300,000?
Yes.
And, you know, the rates that we are going to increase to, and, and the reason why.
Right. Well, in, in part of the memo in the background, we estimate that right now our operating expenses are running about a half million dollars above our revenues, so we are running a deficit in those utility systems, and that's the primary reason for the rate adjustments. It's more to cover our costs than to raise revenue. Obviously, you're raising revenue, but the purpose of the rev, new revenue is to cover the cost of those systems.
Those rates have not been changed for at least six years?
We, we could only find two cases where the rates have been changed. One, I think the base rate was changed in 2009, and then the water rate was changed in 2011. So that's at least five years, maybe six or seven, since the rates have been changed.
Any other questions?
I know none of us enjoy raising rates, but I think it is a necessity in this case, especially just to get to the break even point.
I'd like to thank Dave and, and Mr. Mitchell for coming up and for the workshop that we had earlier and explaining all of this, and with that, I would like to make a proposal that we pass resolution with option number C.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Cron.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number six, discussion and possible action on approval, approval of the emergency operations procedures, EOP, for 2016. Mr. Tyson.
Mayor, council members, it's that time of the year again, every year.
Do you want to tell us a little bit about your deal today? Go ahead.
You want to do what?
If you want to tell us about what you did today beforehand.
Oh, okay, if you want to hear about that now. We had what we call Earthwind and Fire, it's a statewide drill. This is the first time in five years that our computer has not crashed at the state. I figured we accomplished something very good. I kept waiting for it to crash, it has the last four years. But what our purpose was, is to show that something that happens here in Texas County and the city of Guyman, we can do by the computer and send requests down state, and they see it at the state EOC. My understanding is they had over 100 people in the state EOC today. Every time I called, it sounded like they were having a madhouse down there. But it was, it's a program that, that we've been, that the state has been developing, and like I said, for the first four years that we did this, we didn't get to finish the exercise. But this year was fixed, they've been working on the web EOC, and they got it fixed, and it all worked good. And, I don't know, had, I know there's at least 77 counties, and I know that, that was involved in it, and then there's a lot of small towns like Tulsa, Stillwater Lotton, Altus, and places like that, that was also involved in that, so I'm, I'm guessing they had close to 150 people that was on this web EOC drill today. It was interesting, Mr. King and Mr. Cron came out, and I think they mainly just came out to see the office, didn't you, Mr. Cron? But they did get to see how the operations of the web EOC went, and we appreciate you guys coming out and taking any interest on that, so. Any questions I can tell you, ask you, or you want to ask about the web EOC? And it was called Earthwind and Fire. This year ours was over storm, winter storms, always seemed like. Some people wanted to do one over earthquakes, but, you know, we don't have any earthquakes out here, so we were able to take care of that. With the way the wind was blowing today, we could have ended it on fires, but we didn't do that, and it was good. So it was, it was enjoyable, more so, within the last four years, so. Any other ques, any questions?
I have one.
Okay.
With the size of our county and being the second largest in Oklahoma.
Second largest in Oklahoma, yes, sir.
As far as the land, is there, is there a response time when it comes to meeting there, some kind of response time quota for, for, on a per-county basis, or is that?
We just get there as fast as we can. I'm, our fire departments and all our enforcement people are, I hear that in Skinner all the time, and they're, they're very prompt. I think it only took us about, what, 15 minutes yesterday to go to the other side of the state line down south on a hay bale fire, or cotton bale, and they're gone. The same way with all our volunteer fire departments and our, our law enforcement, our volunteer EMSs, they, they're volunteer people, okay? They have other lives, they have jobs, and I am very oppressed, and next time you see a volunteer, pat them on the back or something, because they do a lot, a lot of the training they have to go through and things like that, so I am very proud, but no, there's no requirement saying we have to get somewhere in a hurry, at, within so many minutes.
Thank you.
It's all according who's driving, sir.
Yep. I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, sir.
It's all, it's all according who's driving.
That's true. That's true. I can't keep up with the Dean and Grant, so I just kind of follow in behind them, I mean, I don't need to be there first anyway.
The cool of that is the state farm to help, makes you ambulance and respond out the door in five minutes.
Yes, I forgot about that, I'm sorry. By the time we get the call and they get paged out, they have to be in service within five minutes.
Okay. It's just, it's all volunteer service, you're in bed, you gotta wake up, get the page.
Get dressed.
Get out the door, get in the ambulance car, get out. That's fast, it's very fast.
To your EOP.
Okay, emergency operation plan, same thing. We did have some corrections, of course, we have it every year. I did make some mistakes, and Mr. King brought that to my attention, which I, you know, I'm not so sure that, he's probably not the only person besides myself that reads that whole thing, but, and I, I do appreciate that, okay? Believe me, it has to be corrected. Some of the changes that you probably saw on, on yours was that there was like three, four people that I walked over, Lloyd Bowles, Elvia, and.
Brad.
Brad, yeah, Brad, that I forgot to take out and add the other names, and Livona helped me do that this morning, right after Mr. King called me. That will be incorporated into that, once you approve the, the EOP, then it will, the approval page will be added to the EOP, and will be added to the website. This is something that we have to do, if we're ever into a presidential or even a state disaster, that we declare here in Guyman and in Texas County, we have to have these documents, and it seems like we're doing a lot of documents prepare, and this is just one of them.
Any discussion, questions, motion?
Make a motion that we approve the emergency operation procedures as presented.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Cron.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Mr. Tyson, thank you for all you do. Agenda item number seven is discussion and possible action on approval of a brokerage account for donations received in the form of equities. Sally.
Um, we're on. Give me a chance. Um, it was brought to my attention that there's a foundation that would like to make donation, a donation in the form of equities to the city of Guyman. In order to receive those equities, we need a brokerage account, and so I did some checking on our options, our local options. The first, as my memo reflects, is Citibank, who Carrie Montgomery explained to me that they are going to end their relationship with Sotera in the near future, so she would hate to, for us to open a brokerage account with them and then have to move it. They did offer, however, to enter into an agency agreement if we felt like we needed that. The funds are currently, or the equities are currently being held at Edward Jones, and Edward Jones can open a brokerage account for the city. There are obviously two financial advisors with Edward Jones in this town, as detailed my memo. I would like a recommendation from the council as to where we open those, and then additionally, I would like to liquidate those equities once we receive them and place them in CDs until they're ready to be used. And Mr. Petty can answer any questions about the foundation.
Is there a, is there a specification of what we're supposed to use the money for?
Yes.
There will be, but this, this account would be available for anybody who wanted to make a donation to the city. They could use their stock that has appreciated in value by making that gift, they don't have to pay income tax on that gain, so it'd be a vehicle for anybody that wanted to make a gift for any purpose.
So this is basically for, for stock equities, not, not so much the cash?
Yeah, if the donor cashed in their, their stocks, sold their stocks, then they're going to have to pay income tax on a gain. If they give the stocks to an entity that does not have to pay income tax, like the city, then immediately the city could liquidate those and put the cash just in a holding account until they're ready to use it.
Okay. Is there a minimum amount we have to have with them, or liquidate it is?
To retain the, to keep the account open?
Yeah.
I don't believe so. I mean, obviously, I think if it zeroed out, the account would close, and we could reopen it at a further, at a future date if we wanted. Additionally, Edward Jones has the opportunity, obviously, when we have cash, my preference is to keep it local, in the local banks, but if there was an opportunity to place money in a higher earning, higher yielding CD, they have a greater access to a pool of CDs, so there might be an opportunity at some point to place funds there to earn a higher yield.
Is it the foundation, the foundation will allow us to put this, these equities wherever we see fit?
There.
Or is there a penalty if we move them?
There will be conditions on the donation, Mr. Petty can speak to that.
Yeah, when, when the, when the stocks are transferred to the city's brokerage account, city can liquidate them and put the money wherever it wants to, it can either leave it with Edward Jones on the CD, or can move it to a local bank and put it on a CD, and then the donors, you know, the city has traditionally kind of respected what the donors have put the money in for. I can advise the city on this one, there's a couple of challenge grants that the foundation has in mind, that they'll match dollar for dollar donations by others, so there may be some other individuals or companies that would want to participate in the kind of projects that be suggested. Okay. Any other question?
Did you speak with any other bank in town?
There's no other bank that has brokerage accounts.
That will do the brokerage account?
Mid, I don't believe mid first has a relationship with Sotera anymore either, but no. The only one that has a trust department and has brokerage is Citibank.
Okay. Any other discussion, questions, motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve, approval of a brokerage account, donations received for, and for Edward D. Jones, and I'd like to see Kyle Hawkins as a representative.
Okay. I'll second. Have a motion and a second.
Cron.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes. Thank you.
I didn't get to say aye.
King.
Aye.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
We have five ayes now.
He's going to avoid an election by resigning.
Agenda item number eight is discussion and possible action on declaring real property located at 219 Northwest Fourth Street as surplus. Mr. Mr. Mitchell, you want to give us background on that?
Well, the back, background is that we've had a couple of conversations with the council about how to proceed with either leasing or selling city-owned properties, and what I gathered from that conversation is that the city council is ready to proceed with selling the city hall property, and so the first step would be to declare the property surplus, and then the second step would be to determine what form of sales process you want to use, whether you want a sealed bid or an auction, or some other form of advertising the property for sale. So it's a two-step process. First step is declare it surplus.
Again, I want to thank you for bringing this up, because this is a discussion we've had for over a year, in fact, it was in the budget last year to try to get it sold. I would like to make the recommendation that we declare it as surplus.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second.
Alvedras.
Can I ask a question first? Is this the same property that we were looking into for, what's that?
It's, it's old city hall, yes.
The shelter?
Yeah.
So this would give them as much a right to bid on it as well?
No one can do anything until it's declared surplus.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Wait your turn.
King.
Aye.
Cron.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
All right.
Timing's off.
Your timing's off.
Sorry for that.
The clock's behind your head. Agenda item number nine is discussion and possible action on options of sale of the real property located at 219 Northwest Fourth Street.
I'd like to see it go to bid, sealed bid.
I think that might be your best option, and then if you don't receive a reasonable offer through sealed bid, then you could hold an auction at some later date.
We can, my understanding is that if we do the sealed bid, then, then we come back and we have the opportunity to either accept or deny the bids.
Yes.
We don't set a minimum or anything like that.
No.
Okay.
We know what the price value was, but that was, what, a year or two ago, so we'll see, oh, three years? So we'll, you know, by sealed bid, you'll see what the interest level is, and then you can determine whether you want to proceed with the sale.
Okay. Any discussion, motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve, sealed bid option for the real property.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Cron.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
It's not on there, is any new business? Even it's not on the agenda. Agenda item number 10 is will be adjourned. We're going to re-adjourn as the Guyman Utilities Authority. I find it. Called, we've already done agenda item number two, are there any public comments and announcements? Any public comments and announcements? Like to, one I forgot to bring up over this first opportunity, if you get a chance, drive out by Centennial Park tonight, Pete and his guys have put the Christmas lights up, part of them, I don't think they've got everything up, we drove by it last night, and it's pretty impressive, so drive by, and then if you see him and any of his crews, tell them, good job. Makes, makes you feel festive, even though it's 80 degrees outside, and the wind's blowing. Any other public, any other public comments or announcements?
It's still big and festive.
Any new business? Any new business? Not, we'll stay in adjourned. Thank everybody for attending tonight.
Mayor, I do have one.
Yes.
I have a homework assignment for each of you.
Oh, crap.
We're adjourned.
Yeah.
Well, as, as promised, we have received 25 applications for the city manager position, and this is a little checklist spreadsheet for you to use. We have the 25 applications in the, in Vicki's office, and you can come in at your leisure to review the applications, and then if you would use this form to fill out comments or suggestions, or whatever you'd like to do, say yes, no, maybe, no, interested, not interested, and then we'll compile those responses and try to give you a list of maybe the top four, five, or six that, that everyone's picked, and then we can start with the review process at that point. So I know it's Thanksgiving next week, if you'd try to get this back to us within the next two weeks, that'd be great, and we can proceed.
I might add that in this, as we did the last time, that these, these resumes are confidential until you get to a certain point?
Yes.
Is that not correct?
They're, they're available in the HR office, you're welcome to come in and, and review them there, but we are not going to make copies for everybody and hand them out, so.
Okay.
Thank you. You're welcome.
We're adjourned again.
Thank you for the homework.
[music]
Any other public, any other public comments or announcements? Any new business? Any new business? Not, we'll stay in adjourned. Thank everybody for attending tonight.
Mayor, I do have one. I have a homework assignment for each of you.
Okay.
We're adjourned.
Yeah. We're adjourned.
Well, as promised, we have received 25 applications for the city manager position, and this is a little checklist spreadsheet for you to use. We have the 25 applications in Vicki's office, and you can come in at your leisure to review the applications. And then if you would use this form to fill out comments or suggestions or whatever you'd like to do, say yes, no, maybe, no, interested, not interested. And then we'll compile those responses and try to give you a list of maybe the top four, five, or six that everyone's picked, and then we can start with the review process at that point. So I know it's Thanksgiving next week. If you'd try to get this back to us within the next two weeks, that'd be great, and we can proceed.
I might add that in this, as we did the last time, that these resumes are confidential until you get to a certain point?
Yes.
Is that not correct?
They're available in the HR office. You're welcome to come in and review them there, but we are not going to make copies for everybody and hand them out, so. Thank you. You're welcome.
We're adjourned again.
Thank you for the homework.